Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Delano Area Chamber of Commerce Meet the Candidates series. My name is Becky Schausk, and I'm part of the Government Affairs Committee at the Delano Chamber of Commerce, along with Jack Lynch, who all do some sports. Gabe Licht of Delano Herald Journal and Josh Gieland of Minnesota Lakes Banks, who is assisting me tonight as our timekeeper. So he'll flush the little card when you guys are getting close. We want to thank all the candidates for running, for public office, and for being here because without you folks, the government, our local government, just doesn't operate all that well, obviously. And for all of the residents and business owners as well, who have been participating. Tonight, we are going to feature candidates for the Delano School Board and City Council. We're beginning with City Council. And the format for tonight will be similar to as it's been in past years, which will include candidate introductions, chamber-prepared questions, and an opportunity for audience members to come to the podium or virtually, in the case of our Facebook Live, which is where Gabe is helping us get the info out. And then finally concluding remarks. We will not be okay with any personal attacks, and no endorsements will be made by the chamber at the conclusion of the event. We anticipate this to end around 9:00, and candidates are encouraged to stick around and mingle if the opportunity presents itself. Just remember, this is a forum.
The front door is locked. It's not working.
Okay, well, that's because we don't let anymore in here. No, I'm teasing.
Oh, yeah. Just because you're competing.
Yeah. Hmm.
You want it unlocked?
I think we should have it unlocked, yes.
Tuesday night, anyway.
Thanks, Jackson. All right. Thanks for letting us know that. So remember, it's a forum and not a debate. So the real object of these meetings are for people to get to know who the candidates are. Some will be familiar to you, and some will be brand-new faces. So each candidate will be provided the opportunity to answer questions asked by the moderator and the audience. And only if the moderator, which happens to be me representing the chamber, feels it's appropriate, will candidates be allowed to respond to remarks from other candidates. Okay? The first portion of the evening will feature you folks, Delano City Council candidates, and each of you, you will each have two minutes to respond to any of the questions that are asked. Okay? We got it, everybody? Okay, good. All right. So let's begin with our introductions first. So you'll each take two minutes and introduce yourself, and let us know why you are running for City Council. Betsy?
Well, good evening. My name is Betsy Moran. Thanks, Becky, for hosting. And Gabe, thanks for putting it all together in the chamber, all the chamber members. I'm currently a City Councilperson, and I have been since 2009. I formerly lived in Westridge Hills. Now I live in downtown Delano with my two daughters, both teenagers. I'm a graduate of the University of Wisconsin, and although I didn't grow up here in Delano, I have a long family history in Delano. So I've been coming out here to the Fourth of July since I was a baby. So I'm very well acquainted with Delano. As a City Councilperson, I've always strived to balance quality of life and fiscal responsibility. Well, I'll leave it at that, and then we'll get to the questions. Thanks.
Okay, very good. And our next candidate is John Sutherland.
Hello. Well, good to thank you, Becky, and Gabe, and everybody else. I've lived in Delano for 30 years, raised our family here. My wife, Margaret Field, brought me out here 30 years ago. I've really enjoyed living in Delano. Our kids went through the school district. I care about Delano. I've worked for a number of municipalities in my career, and I felt that I could bring something to the table for the City Council and to serve the public, and that's why I ran four years ago. And I've enjoyed it, and I'd like to serve again. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, John. And Larry Bartles.
You can call me Bart if you'd like.
Can I? Thank you, because I did that last go-around all the time.
I won't yell at you.
Okay, thank you.
Obviously, I'm Larry Bartles, and since the other two mentioned it, I'm actually a lifetime resident of Delano. And I would say 63 years, but then you know how old I was, plus I won't say that. My family is my wife, Lynn, my son, Kent, and Marissa, who I sad to say both live in Wisconsin right now. They're kind of cheeseheads, and there's nothing I can do about it, so sorry about that. I went to the University of Minnesota, where I studied engineering, economics, and business. I found the economics and business to be the most enjoyable, the spending and saving and financing-type things. That's one of the reasons I'm running for council, because I think there's always another set of eyes that could look at things and possibly make some good suggestions. I previously served 16 years on the City Council, 12 years on the Utility Commission, and three years on the Planning Commission. And somebody were saying, "Why do you want to do this again?" Well, I've learned things, even by accident, that I think are helpful, and I'd like to come back and help keep things on track. I've done 28 budgets, 16 for the city, 12 for utility, multimillion-dollar budgets that were lean, accurate, and they benefit the taxpayers of this town. A lot of projects took place during, when I was in council on the utility, the River Street Interceptor, the water treatment plant, Water Tower, the wastewater treatment plant, the Grandstand, the stormwater fund, and other projects involving reconstruction. I also, excuse me. I know, I'm fine, believe me. We got sewer system improvement projects which were handled efficiently, with the least possible disruption to the community, which is extremely important. And most importantly, all the city projects came in on budget and on time. Thank you.
Very good. All right. We'll now move on to the first question. And we'll start with you this time, John. So in two minutes, what do you feel are the most important issues facing our city? And what do you propose to do about them?
Well, I think growth is the most important issue in the city, that we need to be prepared from a City Council level and a staff level to address the growth as it comes. It's gonna come. Developments are coming, residential and commercial, and we need to provide good developments for the city in the long run. And then I think that for the city to provide the correct amount of staffing and public works, and policing, and administration, and finance to handle this growth and to handle the proper production of all the work that goes on in the city, we need to have good administration, good staff, so we can address everything that comes to us.
All right. Very good. Bart, the same question.
Repeat that, Becky, please.
Sure. What do you feel are the most important issues facing our city, and what do you propose to do about them?
Well, obviously, growth is an issue for the city. I'm actually at the point where I think I'd have to look at possibly restricting growth from now on, only in residential. I think the industrial park's been doing wonderfully, which is really a blessing. But I'm not sure that we need a lot more residential growth. I'm not against it, but I'd like to really look at that more carefully. And of course, the ongoing problem for city councils forever is accurate budgeting and actually spending money on the things that are important, that we need, and not on things that are nice to have. It's a little bit like Scrooge talking, but that's how I look at things.
Okay. Very good. And Betsy, what do you feel are the most important issues facing our city, and what do you propose to do about them?
I think that the most important part of City Council right now for me is long-term planning, not just looking at the issues that come before us on a month-by-month agenda, but really looking out into the future with a vision for what we want for this town. We are growing, and we need to continue providing services at an acceptable level to the people who live and work and own businesses here. And we want to be able to do that in a financially prudent way and keep our tax rate at an acceptable level. What I plan to do about that is, for one thing we've done for the past several years is have budget forecasts that go out, you know, five and 10 years, so we can plan how we're gonna borrow money, how we're gonna spend money, our capital improvement plans, you know, when is the right time to spend money on a fire truck? When is the right time to, you know, do big things? Another thing that I think a long-term plan needs, it's been a while since we've had a new comprehensive plan, which is basically a big process and document where we talk to lots of people, lots of meetings, and we discuss, like, what do we want our town to look like? Do we want more housing? Do we want more business? You know, how should we zone it all? What should be our priority? So I think it's probably getting to be time for a new comprehensive plan. And planning for the infrastructure replacement over the long term. Things that we've done in the past are look at our road system and say, how many miles of roads do we have? How long do they last? How can we plan for that into the future so that we don't come to a crisis?
Okay. Very good. Thank you. All right. The second question, and we'll begin with you, Larry. How will you work to promote and support the current businesses while attracting new businesses to Delano?
Well, one of the aspects of business, of course, is taxes, so you have to have an acceptable tax rate for the existing businesses that are here. And of course, that goes back to spending, and there's some growth cover some of that, but that's all kind of related. The problem with, businesses will locate here if there's enough people around and there's enough opportunity to actually do that. Obviously, some businesses and industries we use tax increment financing for and other things like that, and I would certainly continue to do that. That's been an effective thing for 30 years since I've been around. There's tax increment financing, there's also tax abatement financing, there's all kinds of things to help get those type of businesses in. And those would continue. And of course, the city itself, the city staff, Phil, have to be outgoing and looking for possibilities of business and talking to those people constantly. And I think they're doing that now, so I'd continue that, of course.
Okay. So Betsy, same question. How will you work to promote and support the current businesses while attracting new businesses to Delano?
Being business-friendly is something that I try to be. I look for ways that we can be flexible and responsive to the needs of our business community. For instance, some of our current businesses that have expanded, we've found places for them to expand to, whether that's our new business park, or ways for them to expand on-site and be flexible with their Planning Commission applications, you know, like, for example, Cal Brant, his business expanded. We wanted to make it easy for him to do so. Attracting new businesses is obviously wonderful. We've done some of that. We got a major new employer, KLN, who will be opening soon. But one of the things that we hear a lot from our current businesses and ones that would like to come here is worker housing, and indeed, even with the schools, like a young teacher. So any kind of workers, they need somewhere to rent, somewhere that meets today's needs. So we're looking at housing, the variety of housing that we have in our town. In these times right now, we have COVID problems, right? There's some businesses that are really suffering with this COVID, and we've been giving about a third of our PPP money from the city in grants, and we've been trying to make low-interest loans for businesses who are having hardships with their utility bills. So there's a lot of ways, big and small, that we can support businesses, and that's what I would prioritize.
Okay. Very good. And John, how will you work to promote and support the current businesses while attracting new businesses to Delano?
Well, one, I would say, to continue the programs that we have right now, for instance, what Betsy mentioned, the help with the utility bills, to ask the businesses what they need, to listen to the businesses, and put together responses to what their needs are, direct staff to address the needs of the businesses, to provide public safety for the businesses and the residents of the city. I agree with Betsy wholeheartedly about updating the comprehensive plan and the city's planning and zoning ordinances. And that's, again, a point of mine. I worked with planning and zoning regulations for a long time, implementing them in a number of cities. So I think that it's something that you need to do with a soft hand, the regulations, and modify them where they're needed, and respond to the businesses' needs. I agree again with Betsy about the planning and zoning things that the city is currently doing to guide workforce housing in the city, and I hope that we can continue that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. All right. So, all right. So let's go to the third question then, and Betsy, we'll start with you. Did I get this out of whack? Nope. I should be right on. How will you work to reduce the tax burden on our taxpayers? And what do you see areas you might suggest to reduce spending on? And you can have three minutes for this one, if you want to really get into it.
Okay. Well, first of all, I will say that over the last four years, that is indeed what we have done, is reduced the burden to the taxpayers, and I'll tell you why I say that. As our city has grown, there has been more that we have to do. There's more roads, there's more parks, there's more police protection that is needed, et cetera. So obviously, we need to spend more. But how much does it cost in a rate that we charge on property taxes? That's really where the rubber hits the road for individual properties, is what is the rate? In 2018, the rate was 54%, and now, in 2021, it's proposed at 50%. So we've gone down from 54, down to 53, down to 52, now we're down to 50. So the rate has come down. Now, how have we done that? It's not from spending less, it's from having more people paying into the pie. So if you think of it as, you know, you're buying a subscription to a set of services, fire protection, parks, you know, road maintenance, what is the rate for that subscription? The rate has come down, and yet we are still providing all those services. So that's what my record has been. In terms of looking for ways to save money, there are two things, right? There's needs and there's wants. You know, some might say, excuse me, that we should only cover needs and never wants. I think that there's a balance somewhere in between those. I do think that there are quality-of-life things that make this a special place to live, and a place that does attract new people. You know, we have awesome parks. We have amazing parks. And part of that has been our partnership with the local company that builds playground equipment. So that's one way that we can contain costs, is by partnering with people. We have an amazing senior center. You know, we could save money if we just got rid of all of these quality-of-life things, but I think that coming up with a balanced approach between what is worth spending money on, what is a want that we really do want, I think that's an okay thing to do, so long as we're being responsible and your rate is staying stable or coming down as it has been.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. So John, how will you work to reduce the tax burden on taxpayers? And what do you see as areas that we might be able to reduce spending?
Well, I would look hard and twice at large bonding proposals. Bonding proposals tend to affect the tax rate for a longer period of time. I would support the businesses that pay a large percentage of the tax in the city for the long run. For instance, supporting the new businesses, the large new businesses that come to town, because in the long run, they pay a fairly healthy tax rate, and that helps the residential taxpayers' rates stay lower. And that's true for this round, that the tax rate is the key, I think, and it is staying low at this time. So I think we have to look hard at spending and balance the supporting growth and the needs of the city when we look at spending. I do believe, I do agree with some of the expenditures that we've had in the past that provide a quality of life, like the splash pad, for instance, and supporting the larger industrial developments that we've done in the past, in the most recent past, within the last four years. So I think that will help keep the tax rate low. I know that the current council and the feeling of staff, administration, and finance has an attitude that's in sync with the council to try to keep the tax rate low.
Okay. So I've heard both of you talk about the tax rate, but I haven't heard either of you talk about what are you gonna reduce spending on? So you can't think of one thing that you would say we could reduce spending in this area? I know that's politically charged, maybe, but that is the question.
Well, I have been on the council now for 12 years, and there are lots of proposals that come before us that we talk about, and some we proceed, and some we do not proceed. So, you know, that is what our role is. As a five-person group, we all come with our own approaches, and as a group, we make a decision of whether to proceed or not. Certainly, there have been things that have been proposed that we said, "No, the time is not right to spend the money." And if there was some specific thing that was on the table, if you're asking me today, you know, "Should we spend on this or not?", you know, I would use a similar approach today as I have done for the last 12 years of, you know, what is this gonna do to our tax rate? What, you know, is, how extravagant of a want is this? No, I mean, I stand by my decisions.
But that's new spending. I'm talking about current spending.
I don't have anything that I can offer you up.
Okay. John, do you?
Yes.
Okay.
Where the City Council is looking at providing for the food shelf, a long-term location for the food shelf. So that's something that could be offered up. I personally supported providing for the food shelf, because I feel that that's something that the community needed, that we needed to do, and the opportunity was right. I could see reductions in staffing. We've had some growth in the building department. That's something that I'm really knowledgeable about, and I debated that issue at the time with the council, and eventually voted with the council to provide the staff. I think that it's an area that you could cut if you wanted. I personally voted to support the building department because the numbers in construction and permit activity demanded it. So another area that we could cut that costs a lot of money is policing, and it's definitely not something that I would cut. I would assess it, try to make it work better, streamline it. Not to say that I see a lot of problems with it, I don't. But if we were looking for a place to try to trim the numbers, you look at the places where you're spending the most money, and we're spending it on the police department, public works, and engineering, and planning, and the issues that we have that come before us demand that we spend that money. So I can't, I could offer them up, but then I would really find a hard time supporting, cutting those items. I think that when we, I mentioned earlier, we have to look hard and twice at large bonding proposals. That can actually, in a good interest rate scenario, and Betsy probably knows more about this than I do because of her background, the large bonding proposals at a better interest rate are gonna save you money in the long run. So if we have plans to do the roads, and this is something the council's been active on doing, is challenging staff to find things to do that we're gonna have to do later that are actually on the docket, because the road infrastructure plan is 20 years out. So can we bump that up because the interest rate is good? We all know that when you want to buy a new car or something, and the interest rate is really good, or you want to buy a new house and the interest rate is really good, that's the time to do it. And so I think that we've had some purchases that I think that we did look hard at, but we still spent the money.
Okay. So you don't really have a particular area that you would reduce the spending on tomorrow?
Right.
You're talking about ways to save money, and I get that, I appreciate that, and you both are kind of in the same boat. You don't really have one thing that you could say, "Well, we really should cut here." You're looking at ways of being efficient. And that's fine. That's fine. Okay.
That is, I would say, when I talked about the police department, that pretty much goes across all the staffing levels, to look at things, to try and make them efficient. But I don't see cutting staff and cutting the people that get the job done.
Okay. Very good. So Larry, now that we've kind of gone around and around, I'll ask you the same question. How will you work to reduce the tax burden on taxpayers? And what do you see are areas that you might suggest reduce your spending?
Well, as a councilperson, there should be something that you do every year. Look at the staffing levels, look at the spanning levels. Do we really need a new truck? Could we buy a used truck? We used the truck three months out of the year. Why do we have a brand-new one? We have to put a new engine in it? We've saved the money by not buying a new one. I mean, there's things like that that every council should be doing constantly. I assume that they are. I haven't been on here for a couple of years, but that's something that's been done all the time when I've been on it. As you do that as a business person, too, you know, maybe we can't buy a new truck. Maybe we don't need a new truck. Just stuff, simple stuff like that. And one of the things I heard, and I'm not being overly critical, but just because the tax rate doesn't go up, that doesn't mean the spending hasn't gone up. As you get new people in here, you can spend more money, and you keep the same rate. That's, and that might be necessary, too. And oftentimes, it is. But let's not make the mistake that that's an end to itself, that just not raising the tax rate is not raising spending, because those two things aren't exactly the same.
Sure. Okay. Very good.
Can I comment on that?
Becky? All right.
And it's actually a compliment to Larry. I'd like to point that out right away. Larry's been around a really long time.
Not that long.
Okay. Pretty long.
You're older than I am.
Longer than I am, working for the city, I would say. So one of the things we spent a lot of money on, and I lost some sleep on, was buying So one of the things we spent a lot of money on, and I lost some sleep on, was buying a fire truck. That cost a lot of money and I first could not fathom that we would spend that much money on a fire truck. But when I looked at the history put together by the finance department and staff about how long they've been saving for that fire truck, it's like Larry started it. It's good, Betsy started it. And they kept putting money, nickels and dimes away, bigger portions than that, but they put money away for years and years and years. And how could I come in and try to look for a cut and cut the biggest chunk you could see?
Sure.
I couldn't do it. And I wholeheartedly supported the fire truck with the council and basically, I'm sure Larry had his hand in it a long time ago. I can't say for sure, but thank you.
All right.
And I'll just add a comment. Of course, our spending is up, you know, year over year. Insurance prices go up, we have more roads to plow. Of course, things cost more every year, just like they do in your own home. But the tax rate, why that's important, is that's a ratio of, you know, what is the total cost and what is your share of that cost? And so if the rate is down, your share is less. That means we're doing more, but it's costing you less. So we're being more efficient.
Sure.
So of course, we're spending more dollars, but we're doing so in a more efficient ratio.
Sure. Okay, very good. All right, so the next question, we'll start with Larry. What do you believe the city's role in purchasing property for development is or should be?
Well, this has been going on for a long period of time. And of course, that, sometimes private people can't do it. And I have no problem with the city acquiring property, assuming there's a demand for that property. And like the industrial park, that industrial park purchase, some private individuals started that, I don't know, 10, 15 years ago, when I was on one of my previous council terms. It took a long time to get to this point. There was a couple of recessions in there, but the bottom line is, oh, we didn't, we bought that after it was offered for sale. Now you have businesses in there, now they're paying taxes, now it's making the tax base grow, which brings extra money. And so I'm all in favor of that. Not for residential, obviously. Some cities have done that, that's going to be a disaster. So commercial, industrial, yes.
Okay. So the second part to that question, oh, nope, sorry, sorry. I jumped ahead. All right, so Betsy, what do you believe the city's role in purchasing property for development is or should be?
Okay, well, I think that it is and should be rare. I, you know, in as much as we can possibly just let the free market work its magic, in some cases, that doesn't always get us what we want or what's best for our town. For example, like the Shell station that was next to the Dairy Queen, sat there for years. Everyone was scared to death to purchase it because they were afraid of pollution. The city, as a municipality, has access to pollution control grants, which a private buyer would never have access to. So in that case, it worked out well. We could buy it, leverage those, the pollution control grants in case of pollution. It didn't happen to be polluted. But now we have sold it to an investor who's going to redevelop it into something better than what was there before with more assurances that it's a better risk. So that's been a good thing that will eventually, hopefully, redevelop into something nicer than what was there. And I think that the town benefits from that. Another example is the business park. We put in a lot of infrastructure, water, electric, et cetera, roads, to get that thing going. And that has turned out okay. We've got a big new employer. We've had expanded existing employers out there. So although we don't want to do that much as a town, occasionally, that is the Kickstarter for something that we want, which is a nicer, redeveloped area or more businesses. So sometimes it's necessary.
Sure, okay. Thank you. And John, what do you believe the city's role in purchasing property for development is or should be?
I did not support this issue previously and I now have come to believe that we need to do it on occasion to have a good hand in guiding it, to assist in improving the tax base when we know the scenario is good, to install utilities and roads properly. There's some occasions where larger utilities need to be installed and land needs to be acquired in order for that to happen. And it's a great big picture, but it, it needs to happen on occasion. And also to provide for community needs. For instance, workforce housing, I believe, is an admirable goal for the city to provide. And I believe that we can reduce blight and we can reduce, eliminate old polluted property because our ability to do it is much stronger than the typical developer, a group of smaller owners or developers. So I think that we have the staffing in certain cases to make it happen. And when it's financially feasible and you need to be able to see the end from the beginning. Thank you.
Okay, very good. All right. Our fifth question, then, we'll start with Betsy. Should the city increase the amount of police protection and how would you propose we pay for it?
Well, the paying for it is the big thing. At this time, we actually have just discussed increasing our contract with the sheriff and chose to stay the course because it's extremely expensive. You know, every additional hour of police protection is a lot of money. You know, there's this, just like I was saying before, there's kind of a balance you need between needs and wants. You know, a lot of people want more police protection. And the question for us was, how badly do we need it, given the high price that it commands? At this time, I'm comfortable with where we sit now. That doesn't mean my mind won't change if circumstances change. But for now, I think we can stay the course and keep our costs at a reasonable level.
Okay. And so John, that same question for you. Should the city increase the amount of police protection and how would you propose to pay for it?
So I would say, yes, at some time, we should increase police protection. I would say that growth brings the demands for more staff and potentially more police protection. With that said, I would concur with Betsy that the whole city council and the staff thoroughly discussed the budget in the, all the, each of the four years that I've served. And we haven't really increased police protection. We have tried to work with the sheriff's department to tailor it. And I think that that's at the stage that we're at now, that we feel that it's going to come, one of these days it's going to come, but let's look at the numbers, look at the service, look at the hours, let's try to tailor it first. And by looking at it, more things are going to come out than what I've said right now. And I can't speak for the rest of the council, but I can say that that's what I believe has happened. And so there's not a move to increase police protection, but perhaps to tailor it. And so the question of how to pay it, it's, right now, it's one of the items in our budget that costs the most. So we're trying to keep things at a minimal for increases and that's where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Larry, should the city increase the amount of police protection and how would you propose to pay for it?
Well, the short answer is, I don't know. I have not seen the statistics of crimes in the city from the county. I don't know if they're going up, if they're going down, or they're stable. I know in the metro area as a whole, there's been a lot more property crime during the COVID thing. I don't know if that's because people are bored and they decide to go out and rob things. And I don't know if having more protection would stop that or not. In fact, our own house had a burglary recently. And fortunately for the burglar, I didn't find out about it until after they were gone because I was not happy. But I don't know the answer to that. I just, I don't have statistics and I haven't looked at them. And of course, if you have to pay for it, it's coming out of taxpayers. There's no other way, place to get it from. And it's been, the police protection has been expensive since 1990 when I first, when I first was on the council. That topic comes up every year and every year the council looks at it and says, would extra protection help? Should we pay the money? I think if it actually would help, like for residential, like a yard shed burglary, I don't know if it would help for that. And we examine, what kind of calls are these? Traffic calls? Are they violent calls? If we have a lot of violent calls, of course. I don't think we do here. So the short, I don't know the answer to that right now. I just don't have the statistics in front of me.
Okay, thanks. I'm going to ask this question of you, Betsy or John, whichever one of you might know the answer. And this is my own personal audience question. Sorry, guys. When was the last time we increased, substantially increased the amount of hours of police protection? Any idea?
I don't know the answer to that.
Like, in the last five years?
I don't know the answer.
Okay. Just curious. Because I get asked that question now and again as part of the chamber. It's like, oh, what's the crime rate like? And you don't have your own police department and so who is it that keeps an eye on the place? And how often are they here? And so, that's the only reason I throw that out there, so.
Well, we do have 24-hour protection. We do have 24-hour protection. We don't have 24-hour town car. Like, we have certain hours where we have a dedicated deputy just patrolling Delano alone. But it doesn't matter what time of day or night you call, there is a deputy who will respond.
In how much time?
Well, I don't know. I mean, the response times is a question for the sheriff.
Right. Okay. That's not part of the contract?
Well, I mean, I, we'll have to pull out the contract and we'll have to pull out all the stats to answer all those questions for you.
Okay.
I don't have it at the tip of my tongue.
John, did you have a comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
So the, we haven't increased it substantially in my four years.
Have or have not?
Have not.
Okay.
And the council has essentially looked at the policing and can see that the whole nation is essentially retooling the way policing can be done. So it's like you're in, you're in midstream and you got to get out of that current before you can take action. And we need to review the service first before we would increase it. And again, I can't speak for the rest of the council, but that's how I interpret what we've done.
Okay. All right, good. All right. So that was our last question that was put together by the chamber. So now I would open it up to audience questions. The questions must be something that all the candidates can answer. And so if you'd like to ask a question, please approach the podium, state your name and where you live.
May I remove the mask?
Yes, you can.
My name is Dan Bradenber. I live in Colqueta Township. My question is in regards to the comprehensive plan. I've been on the Colqueta Township Board for maybe 18 years and I've been on the Riettonic Planning Commission for six years. And this is one of the most controversial things that are going on right now is the comprehensive plan because it is such a long process to change it. So can you give me a picture of how you would address the comprehensive plan, keeping property rights in mind? And also, I heard the word "soft approach." Maybe it was Betsy that said that. I heard, I'm sorry, John. And I'd like to hear what that means. Is that clear enough for you?
Thanks, Dan.
Thank you.
Anybody in particular want to start that? Well, oh, sorry, sorry. John, you can start.
I can go. I got, I got a question on the soft approach, so.
You're actually on the list to be the starter, so go for it.
I'll be happy to take it. Welcome, Dan. I saw your information in the paper and read it with interest. So thank you for also putting your name out there to serve. I have worked White Bear Lake, Prior Lake, Scott County, Savage, Iyantie County, Mound, Albertville, and 24, 26 years with the implementation and responsibility to enforce the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan as the main person for Mound, Albertville and Iyantie County, I would say. And we need to update our comprehensive plan. We got it on the docket. How we do it is give that plan to a professional who's very skilled at it, Al Brixius, our city planner, and turn them loose with the planning commission, a series of meetings and public hearings, and then bring it to the council. And one of the things that's addressed with the update of the comprehensive plan is, what's been happening legally lately with respect to people's property rights? And where do you need to improve the comprehensive plan and protect people's property rights so you're not being brought to court? There's a number of issues with the Americans for Disabilities Act. It was signed by the first Bush on the White House lawn and they're still litigating issues with that recently. So it's really important to update it and to look at property rights. And the Delano City Attorney is very competent and would also have, their firm would have their hand in reviewing that. And now I have the soft approach question, so I hope I can get a few more seconds. The soft approach is basically you go out and knock on the door. There's a problem out there, it's been brought up, you're assigned to deal with it. It's somehow a violation of something, so you're going to go out there and knock on the door. And introduce yourself, ask them how they're doing and let them know what the problem is and ask them if you can work with them to solve it. It's basically you jawbone them, is the term. Work with them, jawbone them, try and solve the problem with the soft approach, not with a fine, not with a letter that threatens a fine or to arrest them or put them in jail or legal action, but first the soft approach. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Good. Larry?
So was the question regarding Delmo's comprehensive plan of the counties? I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch that. What were you, what were you asking, sir?
Well, I think, I think he's talking about Delmo's comprehensive plan as to how that could be.
Well, and that's been, it's every 10 years or so it's been done before, it'll be done again, and it's pretty much what they said. You have a series of meetings. And the reason it's important is because you have to identify where future roadways may go, water and sewer infrastructure, so you don't put something in here that's dead ending and it gets wasted, or you don't have enough to focus in that area. So it saves the taxpayers a ton of money to have a plan in place. And as far as I know, a lot of times when I was on the council, there has been no adversarial annexations of any township property that I, that I can remember. So we always try and work with the townships and the landowners come to the city and say, we'd like to, we'd like to bring this in, are you in favor of that? That's generally how it works, so I'm, and identifying what should go here, maybe west the town, there should be another, more industrial. So when they put in the sewer and water, they'll oversize those. So when they put in the sewer and water, they'll oversize those pipes. They put the electric lines in, they'll oversize those things. It's a planning tool. It's not to get anybody's property, it's just to help plan for the city and for the people that own the property so they know, have a reasonable expectation of what their property is worth. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Thanks, Larry. And Betsy, anything you'd like to add?
Larry, that was a great answer. Yes, I agree. You know, it does help you so much to plan in advance, to make wise decisions and to plan your resources wisely. And I would agree that we have a pretty good relationship with the township and we only annex new properties into the city if they request to be not, we don't go out there and take. You know, they come to us. We just wait for the door, somebody to knock at the door. But the other, there's a couple of other things about comprehensive plans I'll just mention, and that is, there's a lot of opportunity for people to have input in a comprehensive plan redo. There's a ton of meetings. There's a ton of public input that can be shared. And that is an opportunity to really put your vision together of what you want your city to be like, you know? This is, you know, do you want to look more like a Minneapolis, or do you want to look more like a Plymouth, or do you want to look more like an Excelsior, or what? And so that is really, you know, your opportunity with the comprehensive plan is to put together your vision and then use your resources wisely to accomplish that over the course of the long term.
Good. Very good. Thanks, Betsy. All right. Any other questions? John, you know the drill.
Thank you, Betsy. Well, I know you all, and you all do a good job. We appreciate what you do. And Larry, you never give up. You're the Energizer Bunny.
John, will you please identify yourself?
I'm John Tackeberry.
And where do you live?
Where do I live? I live in Franklin on the, now the Egyptian frontier, which is Eagan Avenue that meets the Highway 12, which is now like Mars with the traffic that's coming in the next few weeks.
Ah, okay.
Okay? That's a whole nother question, right back, what happens at an intersection. But I have a double-sided question. Larry, this one part isn't fair to you, but you could jump in if you want. Number one, simply, and you don't have to spend a lot of time thinking about this, did anyone, oh, by the way, retail, it's about retail, okay? Manufacturing is great, but I want to remind you that we go back to when we had women's clothing, men's clothing, many things here, and we have none of that. And the replacement is not food and liquor. And by the way, we had more than one food store, okay? So retail is a big item. Simple question. Did anyone on this council or in your administration that you know of reach out to find out why Harley was closing and leaving Delano? Simple answer. Did anyone do that?
No, I personally did not.
You did not?
When you said Harley.
Anybody that you know of do that?
John, are you talking about the Harley-Davidson?
Of course. I said Harley. There's only one Harley.
Well, it could have been somebody's name for all.
Harley-Davidson was here before my time.
I was very.
Do you know anything about that? Because is it relevant when you have major retail? We lost Chrysler. They're gone. Freezing Ford left at 82. Now, there is a GM store today, thank God for Davis, because that would have been bye-bye, just so you all know. That was going. Pulled that, washed it out. And Davis came in and bought it, fortunately, for this town. But I'm telling you, the real story, the rest of the story is, what are you doing about retail in relationship to the world? Because people leave this town and buy cars and buy everything else when they leave this town for goods and services. And we truly need that. We had that years ago. Now we've lost it. Manufacturing phenomenal. I know what it does for taxes. But in the meantime, retail, chamber, I chair the task force. It's called Positive Forward. It's about business. And food and liquor doesn't do it, because people are buying clothes from Target in Buffalo.
So, John, the question is?
Is? You knew nothing about it. That's the answer.
Who knows one?
Nobody did anything to talk, to figure out why Harley was leaving and what we could do to change that. Did anybody do that?
I can't speak for the rest of the council or the mayor. But I personally did not speak to them, and I didn't know it was coming, and I was really disappointed.
You know, and I understand, maybe you couldn't change it, but the reality is you have to have that kind of vision to look forward, to say, what can we do to keep what we got, let alone try to replace it? By the way, you'll never replace it. That franchise is gone for the rest of your lives. It's gone. So is Chrysler. So is Freezing Ford.
Okay, John. Let, Betsy, did you have an answer for him?
I personally did not reach out to the Harley-Davidson dealership.
Which is, okay.
In response to your request for a better retail environment. I think that there is some things that the city can do to make the environment for retail as attractive as possible. But obviously, as you know, we can't just call up, you know, Mr. Target and tell them, you shall put a Target here, or call up Mr., you know, food store and say, you shall do this.
Why can't you?
Well, I mean.
I mean, by the way, in your defense. By the way, in your defense, nor did the chamber do anything. So in your defense, I mean, you know, if you look at the front line, you know, even the chamber should have gone out there, met with Rodney Boy, and said, hey, what can we do to keep you here? And I know for a fact, and you're here, Joanne, chamber do anything?
So I'm Joanne. I'm the Delano Area Chamber of Commerce. And yeah, I got word of it about two weeks before it was announced to the public, and I did call and have a conversation with him on the phone.
But, you know, in our defense, I mean, we all have to think forward on this. That's one quick question. The other one is this. In, and by the way, this came from 6 o'clock news tonight. Because 6 o'clock news, before I came here, unfortunately, they're trying to figure out what they're going to do in Minneapolis, because they can't give their buildings away. And they're empty with COVID, and nobody's going back. So Minneapolis, you can imagine what the future is to that.
So what's the question, John?
Let me do my question.
Well, I will, John, but we are going to be up against.
I would like to know quickly what you would do if we have the same thing happen here in Delano and Franklin Township that happened in Minneapolis? And I'm not talking protesters. I'm talking violence demonstration.
Okay, John.
What would you do? What would you, what position would you take on the city council of Delano, Minnesota? Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, John.
Can I ask a question? Want to answer?
Am I going first? Uh, is it Larry?
Larry's first.
Larry's first.
Sure, make me go first.
Well, it's your turn. Sorry.
No, it's fine. First of all, the last speaker just asked why I do this every few years. It's so I get questions from the speaker, which I really enjoy, so I kind of found it interesting. Obviously, if there's a riot or the council is not going to go out there and fight, that requires the National Guard, it requires police, requires all kinds of things we don't have. So the odds of that happening are almost zero, but it's something to think about, but it's nothing that the city can prepare for in that matter. It'd be, you just can't.
Right. Okay. Thanks, Larry. Anything you want to add, Betsy?
I will add that we do have disaster planning in place. I mean, we have a public safety director. It's our fire chief. He has a number of different, you know, kind of disaster plans ready to go, whether it be a train derailment or a tornado rips right through the Fourth of July carnival or whatever. And there is a chain of command. There is a number of partners that we call upon for mutual aid, you know, and that if we had a terrible violent, you know, uprising, you know, obviously, our fire department is not going to be able to manage that on their own. We would refer to a chain of command, mutual aid, you know? I mean, we have disaster plans in place. It may not be exactly what that happened in Minneapolis, but, I mean.
That wasn't a disaster.
We do think things through.
That was not a disaster. We're talking about what would your stand be in relationship to taking, telling the sheriff, if you want the guard, if you want all mutual aid? And perhaps you guys nothing to do with that, you all do. The mayor in Minneapolis and the governor on the 6 o'clock news is totally responsible to what happened, closing Minneapolis down for now and the future. That was on the 6 o'clock news tonight.
Part of our, part of our disaster response is what are the roles of each type of person? So the public safety director is like the incident command. The council has their role of approving expenses or approving, you know, overtime. I mean, I have my role, he has his role, other people have their role. I mean, that's, we would respond accordingly to our disaster planning.
Okay. John, anything you want to add?
Yeah, my personal opinion would be I would not give up the ship. And now I would give that direction or in a conversation with the rest of the council, and then the council would decide collectively. But that would be my immediate input, is to protect the residents and businesses and provide for law and order. And then we would proceed with the rest of the emergency management protocols that we have.
Okay. Very good. We need to move on with our concluding remarks, so each candidate can make their closing statement. They each will have two minutes. And Betsy, you get to start.
Again, okay, great. Well, thank you again for hosting this, and thanks to the audience for coming out, actually, to City Hall to participate. That's pretty cool. Again, my name is Betsy Moran. I believe that Delano is a fantastic place to live. I believe it is also a fantastic place for you to do business. And this is a hometown kind of place, you know, where we wave to our neighbors and, you know, we have a certain self-contained feeling here, like, you know, we're like in our little nest. And that's what I love about this town. That's why I serve. That's why I try to do a good job for you and come prepared and make good decisions on your behalf. Obviously, my decisions are, I'm not the queen, I'm one of five. It takes five different people to come to a, to a direction that we take our town. I think what I bring to the council as one of those five is a balance between quality of life and financial responsibility. So thanks again for having me and have a good night.
Thanks. John?
I really like working with the whole of our city issues and with our current council. I feel I bring some good experience to the table. We have been collectively proactive for development and responsive to issues that arise with development. And I also feel we've been responsive to people's needs. We, I did not know about the Harley-Davidson and the people from the chamber. I was wondering if they had spoke with Phil Kern about that right away when that happened? That would be something I would want to have for our community is more communication, a soft approach. I've really enjoyed working for the city over the last four years. I would say that we've got some really good talent sitting up here with two people on either side of me, and I feel comfortable that whatever the outcome is, Delano is going to be in good shape. And I would end with, I'd like to be there to serve, and I've enjoyed working with you and the rest of the council. So I appreciate it and thank you.
Good. Thanks, John. Larry?
My vision for the city has always focused on improving and maintaining our street systems, sewer water, infrastructure, and all flood control, stormwater, and I'll continue to do that. And by the way, we do not have to have incredibly high taxes to do these things. We do need to budget wisely, and we have to learn to say no to some projects that might be nice but are not necessary. And that doesn't mean we're going to, I'm going to, I don't like to have parks and I don't like little dogs and kids. I do. But you have to make choices sometimes, and I'm not sure that those choices are all being made. And you have to decide that yourselves. If you're happy with the spending that's going on, if you're happy with the products that are going on, by all means, vote for these too. If you think there might be a nice, have another set of eyes looking at things, I'd ask you to vote for me. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks to all three of you, and thanks for your time. And I'd say encourage you to hang around, otherwise. Your time is up. Now we'll take a few minutes to kind of reset for the next round.
What? That was kind of mean.
Well, thanks, everyone. We're going to get started with our second part of the evening now. So this second half now, we will be introducing you to some of the candidates for school board. Let me just explain the situation here to the best of my ability here. There are five candidates running for four positions on the school board. They are Amy Johnson, Jim Gerke.
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 Yes.
Okay. Sue Roser, Regina Lupton, who is not able to join us tonight. She was intending to but had a family situation come up that has made it impossible for her to join us. And of course, Rachel Deppa. Now, Rachel is running unopposed for a two-year seat and also wasn't able to join us. So she is not here tonight, but based on her running unopposed, we thought that was not going to be a huge problem for her. So with that, we have three of our four candidates here tonight. And so we'll do this similarly to how we did the city council in that we'll give you each two minutes to introduce yourselves. Tell us why you're running for school board and why you're the best candidate, because you all are the best candidate, right? Okay. Now, come on, guys, we have to relax and have low fun, so don't be too stiff here. And the order that we're going to go in is the order that you're seated for at least the first question. So Jim, we'll start with you, then the second question will go to Amy, and then the third question will start with Sue here. And so we'll start now with a two-minute time period that you can tell us why you're running and why you'd like to be elected. So Jim?
Hello? My name is Jim. Can you hear me? My name is Jim Gerke. I'm a proud parent of two girls in the Delano School District. Abby is in eighth grade and Lydia in first. I'm riding a little high tonight. I just came from my daughter's swim meet. And the girls are undefeated this year. So excellent time, right? So I never thought I would be a swim parent. I don't want to spend my entire time talking about being a swim parent, but if you are a swim parent, that consumes your life. And you learn about dedication and strength and everything you want your kids to be. So I am married 15 years to my wife, Sarah. Her and I live in Delano now for five years. Feels like longer because when Abby was four, she started going to Tiger Kids Club. We lived in Montrose at that time. So like I say, it feels like we've been here longer, but we will be here at least until Lydia graduates high school. So we are definitely dedicated to this town and this school district. Background about myself, I am in sales right now, but I also am a graduate of a technical college. I believe a lot, my passion is trades and technical education. I feel this is a path that a lot of students are unaware of. I definitely want to be a voice for that path. I don't feel that the four-year education university path is the only way for kids. So I just want to say my main passion, my main goal of being on a school board for this particular school is to let kids know about trades, skilled labor. This is definitely an area where a kid can thrive, rewarding. This is definitely an area where a kid can thrive, rewarding, high-paying jobs. This is, like I say, this is my goal.
All right, very good. Thanks, Jim. So, Amy?
Hi, thank you for having us tonight, I really appreciate it. My name is Amy Johnson. I've lived in Delano for 18 years with my husband, Gino. We've been together 27 years. We have two boys. Our oldest was a 2016 graduate of Delano, and then a 2020 graduate of Mankato, and is now a preschool teacher here in Delano, which is fun. And then we are, our youngest is a 11th grader at the high school. So, both of my children have gone through the, the entire school system. I am a longtime employee of Best Buy Corporation. I've held lots of operations, demand planning, supply chain, and merchant-type roles there, and now I'm currently a project manager for our e-commerce website, so. Why am I seeking reelection? Really for the same reason that I chose to run 12 years ago. So, this is the 12th year, I'm finishing up my 12th year, so this would be my fourth term on the school board. And a lot of the passions I had then, I, I still have today, and that's really around just a commitment to academic excellence for the students that we serve, but also a financial stewardship for our, our community at large. I was a very concerned taxpayer when I ran for office in 2008, and I, I continue to be even as I sit here today. So, a lot of those motivations were why I would like to continue to serve this community.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. Sue?
Thank you for having this event and for having us here. My name is Sue Roser. My husband, Alex, and I have two children who have attended the Delano school system since ECFE days. We, my husband and I have been married for 23 years. We have lived in Delano, Montrose, Rockford, Delano, for that whole timeframe, and in fact, have lived in Delano again now since 2008. And what I'm running for and why I'm running is really looking at how I can give back using my personal skills and professional skills, one, as a parent, and two, professionally, I work in human resources in the public sector. So, there are great parallels with the school board and the work I do in my day job, which is with Hennepin Healthcare, or HCMC downtown Minneapolis. So, in my day job, I work with a variety of different teams, creating, executing, driving results, monitoring results. In human resources, I'm part of the negotiating team for the different contracts we have for the employees at Hennepin County Medical Center. I try, my goal is to guide teams to execute on the results, right? Making fiscally responsible decisions, matching the needs of, of the greater good of the organization, and that is what I see with the school board, as I see the school board as a governing body for the district to provide transparency to what the community wants and needs from the education, and creating that educational excellence for our kids.
Very good. Thanks, Sue. All right, so we'll move on to the first prepared question. That first question will go, we're gonna be, Jim, we're gonna go to you again only because of taking Regina out of the mix. That way, we'll be on some, easier for me to follow track as well. So, the first question is, what do you feel are the most important issues facing our school district, and what do you see that you'll be able to do about them?
So, I'm receiving texts that no one can hear us. Is this true? Is this being fixed?
Can people hear us?
I mean, yes, in this room, you can hear.
Live on channel 180 for charter, if you have charter. If you don't, the Facebook stream is unfortunately running from that camera. I'm trying to play with it.
Okay.
But the main stuff should go towards the channel if you really want to hear it.
Okay.
Otherwise, it's like, oh, you're not listening.
Okay, so other than being able to fix our technical problems, Jim, I know you could, but...
I just thought I'd throw that out there, so...
Yeah, thanks. So, what are the most important issues facing our district, and what do you propose to do about them?
I mean, the elephant in the room is, we have this global pandemic going on that is affecting the way we are going to school right now. And having a daughter that's a first grader, I have to have her in school. Being present at school is the most important thing I can possibly say. I mean, obviously, from last year's distance learning to this year's distance learning is a 180, and it's way improved, so I'm thankful for that, but I just, no matter what these case numbers come to, these 10 and under kids need to stay in school. This is the number one concern that I have as a parent, and I believe I'm not alone in that. So, other, other than that, you know, the issues that, like I said before, my technical training background, my trades background, I, I want to make sure that somehow we sculpt the curriculum to include these kids that want to take more shop-style classes, industrial training, technical training, whatever we want to call it. There's definitely a need in our city, state, country for skilled labor, and these are truly high-paying jobs that a kid can have a very rewarding future. And I want to let, make sure that this isn't only a male-dominated field, this can be male-female for, for all students. I, I would love to be on the, on the board and be the chair to the Wright County Technical School, because I believe that the person that's that chair right now is leaving, so I would love to fill that spot, and I'd love your support. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Amy, what do you feel are the most important issues facing our district, and what do you see that you can do about them?
Well, federal, state, local spending mechanisms are always going to be the first, I mean, they're there. That is our top issue that faces education. We need a system that allows districts local control, and provides equalized and fair funding opportunities for each district. That's what the C platform is, and we are a member of that. What can I, and, and then locally, we have a operating referendum that's going to be coming up for renewal here, and we really need to spend the time to really think about what is that long-term vision, how does that fit into our strategic goal that we have in place? What are the facility needs now that we pass that bond? What are our curriculum, how do, how does that all come together and play into this operating referendum that we rely on, that is now going to need to be renewed? What I can do personally, for the past four or five years of my term, I've had the opportunity to serve as our representative for the delegate assembly that serves our greater area of central Minnesota. So, I've been able to work with lobbyists that are right there, hand in hand with our legislators, when they're in session, talking about the issues that directly impact our school district and others like us. And how are we making sure that the bills that are being passed benefit us and the students and our, our community? So, I think that's one thing that definitely I bring to the table in the time that I've served the board, is having the opportunity to serve in that capacity.
Okay, very good, thank you. And Sue, want me to repeat the question?
Yes, please.
Okay. What do you feel are the most important issues facing our school district, and what do you propose you would do about them?
So, I've been lucky enough to be on the school board for the last year. I was appointed to a vacant seat, so I've seen, and frankly, been part of one of the most unpredictable school years, I think we can arguably say has happened in decades, maybe perhaps all of our lifetimes. As, as I've seen the challenges, I see them as three different components. One, we have, the, the educational foundation has shifted. This in-person class model, we, the whole structure has had to adjust. So, you're looking at teachers teaching differently, students learning differently, administration trying to measure differently, and what does that success look like from an academic perspective, a fiscal perspective, et cetera? From a financial perspective, we're looking at what's happened in the state related to spending is going to impact us, and it's going to impact us very soon as we look at the operating levy this next year. And then finally, I look at the leadership that we have at the school right now. We have three interim leaders within the school district in each of the buildings. That's where my head is at from a human resource perspective, is making sure that as we have these interims in place, what is the process for the review of that leadership and how they're going to measure success, and build on the experience that kids have from elementary, frankly, starting with TKC to elementary, to the intermediate school, to the high school, into being successful members of the society and hopefully, our community.
Okay, very good, thank you. All right, question two, we'll start with Amy. Amy, how do you see we can improve student achievement in this COVID world environment, particularly the students that may need help to get up to speed?
Well, I think our staff does an amazing job on trying to do the interventions. However, whether it's virtual or if they're an opportunity where they're in person. So, obviously, the elementary and the intermediate are fortunate enough to be able to have a full-time in-person teaching environment, and so I think that, that helps with that one-to-one personal connection that's really critical for those younger students, for reading, for math intervention, et cetera. So, I think that we've got, and they're doing the best that they can right now, to stay on top of that, to make sure we are continuing to achieve. We've talked about, like, last school board, we had our Q Comp representatives come and talk about what does that look like this year in terms of some of the academic achievements that we, we, we kind of mark ourselves against, and so I think they've got a good plan in place to keep that moving forward. The high school, no, that's a different, you know, that's a little bit different story. That's a hybrid situation. I will say that I think we're doing it better than a lot of my other people I've talked to in other districts, where, you know, I, I know some people that their students are going Monday and Thursday, and it's just this kind of disruptive schedule, where I think for us, by having our, our group A go Monday and Tuesday, and then that Wednesday sanitation day, and then Thursday and Friday is the next, at least there's some semblance of consistency, and the teachers can see that progress, and they get two days with them in person. But I think everybody's doing the best they can, and, and hopefully, the numbers will show that.
Okay. All right, Sue, how could, how do you see we can improve student achievement in this COVID environment, particularly the students that may need help to get up to speed?
The way, the biggest way I see that as, well, frankly, as supporting parents and as supporting our teachers, I was lucky enough to go to the professional development meeting of the school board, of the school district, a few weeks ago in someone else's absence, and a lot of the, you could hear the stress, right, in the teachers' voices as they were discussing how to best support the kids, and to pick up on what the kids' needs are and make sure that they're, they're doing that. I know they're working through a lot of different things, and I think when it comes down to it, as teachers, they are doing the best they can. The dedication that I've seen from them, and then also frankly, parent feedback coming through the community, has caused continual adjustments to be made. So, issues with student achievement in this COVID world are quickly pointed out by parents as opportunities arise and they're surfaced and addressed. And that, where, that cycle of feedback is the way I think in this COVID environment, we're continually having to pivot and switch and move to just continually making the situation as good as we can make it.
Okay, very good. Let's see. Jim, did we, we didn't start with you, so we're, we're gonna end with you this time, sorry. How do you see we can improve student achievement in the COVID environment, especially with students that need help?
You know, I, I don't want to be the guy that comes up and criticizes. I'm not criticizing, and I understand that there's guidance from the state, and we have this guidance for counties, and this is what we follow on a case per 10,000 basis, but I just wish we could get the kids, or, sorry, I'll backtrack a little bit. I wish we could have those numbers more local, because right here in Delano, I feel like we have a very low number of cases. And I understand that's probably why, you know, we've controlled it so well in this town, the masks, the social distancing, you know, I gotta watch my daughter's swim meet on a live feed. I mean, there's just a lot of things that we aren't able to do this year that I wish we could do. But I do believe that in-person is the best way. I agree that the teachers are doing the best with they, with what they have. I, obviously, I wish I had a few years on the board so I could better answer these questions as well, but just, I'm, I'm an outsider looking in. I see my own two daughters, I see my first grader go to school and love school and enjoy school, and I see my older daughter wish she could be at school the whole time. So, it's, you know, are the grades going to be worse because of distance learning? I, I hope not. I mean, I get to see a, a kid really take it seriously, but I know there are other kids that struggle because they're at home, they're on their, basically on their device. It's just not taken as serious as if you were actually at school, so I really hope this eventually gets us back to school.
Okay. Third question, start with Sue. Sue, how does the district ensure a well-rounded student experience in this current environment? And by well-rounded, I mean academics, clubs, sports, arts, I mean, all of it. How can we as a district ensure that, or how do we?
We, at the last, thank you, that's a good question, because I think as, as we look at this situation, people are focusing on different aspects depending on their kids' needs and kids' desires. I mean, social activities for younger kids are so very important, so I'm very honored or grateful that they are able to be in person, right, through the school year, and having some of those activities. I mean, I know that they're even doing some form of holiday parties for, within the classroom, right, without volunteers, but they're still trying to create those experiences. The other thing that was mentioned at the most recent school board was Ryan Tool did the presentation related to activities, and it was great to hear him talk about not only the athletic activities that are being occurring, but also looking at, they're doing, looking at a play and different arts activities also. So, those are the different components that I see that the, that the district is trying to do. In fact, I know the high school principal has even put on the whiteboard the list of all of the different things that are sort of rites of passage in the high school, homecoming, powder puff, he listed off many of them, and they're trying to brainstorm and how to figure out how to create those experiences for the students within the school, to create that well-rounded environment between academics and also extracurricular, social events.
Okay, great. Jim, how does the district ensure a well-rounded student experience in the, in this current environment with all of the different aspects?
And, and I do agree. I see that sports, we're doing the best we can with sports, but there are also other activities like band and choir and plays that also need to somehow take off again, because not every kid is in, on the football team. Not every kid, like my own kids, are in swimming and gymnastics. I mean, we have to remember those other kids, that they need other activities beyond just going to school every day. Dances, prom, homecoming, how do we get these things going again in this mask world, social distance world? I mean, I, I was at many middle school dances where we were social distancing the entire time, but that was really for, that was really for a different reason.
That was a different issue.
Right. So, I, I really want my kids to have these experiences that I had, and I do believe we will get back there, and I just want to encourage the superintendent to keep these things in mind, that we do need these clubs, and we need band, and we need choir, and we need plays. So, thank you.
Okay, very good. Amy?
I, of course, completely agree with what Jim and Sue have said. I think we're doing as much as we can. I think last year, obviously, there was so much disappointment because of how locked down and restricted everything was for that, that spring part of the year, which is unfortunate, you can't get that back. I think the important thing, regardless of what we're doing to keep well-rounded, is we need to make sure we've expanded out, and this, this came up a lot last year with graduation, around how are we making sure we're hearing lots of voices as we make some of these decisions? How can we get some parents, how can we get some students weighing in on what are those critical rites of passion, or passion, passive, passive?
Passage.
Thank you. Anyways, so those are important, and it's important to have all of those voices be heard in those decision points. But putting that aside, because hopefully, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll move past this at some point, and one thing I wanted to point out, because I think Delano does a really good job about this, we have, we have staff members, teachers, that are student, that are advisors to our students, and they put in so much time and effort into really understanding each student and sp... each student and spending time with them to think, is this, is this a four-year college student? Is this someone that should go into the trades, into the military? What are the options for these students? And I think that we just can't forget about that. We do a great job in Delano of making sure our students are three-sport athletes, but also do the play and participate in band and choir. We don't fill our, our budgets full of electives. A lot of people criticize us for lack of electives. I think we've done a great job being pretty lean in offering really good elective curriculum for our students that's still fiscally responsible for us.
Good, all right, thank you. All right, so Jim, back to you. How should the district handle the projected budget for shortfall?
So obviously, being new to something like this, this is obviously a weak spot for me. This is something I would love to learn more about, but my understanding is we just can't get all the money from local taxpayers. There has to be a formula that is good for a town like Delano where we can get more funding from state and federal through, through operating levies. So like I say, this is honestly, this is weak for me right now, but I, I really want to learn more about this.
All right, very good. Amy?
I think within the first three years that I was on the board, so probably, what, 2010, I think, we were really in a budget shortfall. I think Becky, you might have actually still been on the board at that time. That was not fun, but I learned a lot through that process. And back then, the, the big thing that we focused on was things and not people, and to avoid that and try to avoid those high-impact student components. But throughout all of that, I think our district has always had a zero-based budgeting philosophy where it starts at the site basis, at the sites, and each site is responsible every year to really building up what are the critical things that they need to have and to make sure that it's all accounted for. But we saw some budget cuts these past, this past year. We were facing them again going into COVID, so that's not going away. And, and like I mentioned at the very beginning, we do have an operating referendum that's gonna come up for renewal, and we need to sit down once again and really do that long-term finance, financial picture. I will tell you, Mary Reader is second to none. We are, we are very grateful to have her. She has been an amazing financial steward for this district for several years, and, and when it comes to financial modeling, she works very closely with our auditors and Lers and puts us in a great position to, to really be able to afford the curriculum offerings that we've had.
Good, thanks, Amy. Sue?
I have a little bit more experience than Jim, but not a lot, so about a year worth of time. And granted, as part of a school board member, you, they do send you to training, right? So, and you learn, and at this point, I would consider myself dangerous with the amount of knowledge I have related to how the funding works from the government down through us and the tax base. The one thing I have picked up on from the processes that I've seen and that have, that I've been encouraged by is not, obviously, the operating referendum is going to be a situation where we're gonna need to address that. The other piece is creatively, within the construct of the financial situation that we have, I know they were very keen on asking for staff input, right? The idea is to impact the kids the least when you're making these decisions, and that was kind of that guiding post that I heard all the way through the conversations is really, we want those kids to have the education they deserve for, that have become expected in the town of Delano. So how can we, as staff members, look at different things creatively? And with my human resource background, right, staffing is a significant component of the expenses at any, at a school educational system, and I think that can be very helpful when we look at these different cuts potentially as we move forward through this, these tough fiscal years ahead.
Very good. And I will tell you, to newer people, plan on at least two years before you have any idea how that budget.
Well, I was gonna say, I could serve another 20 years, and I don't know that you would know more about the funding formula at the state level. So, I mean, thank goodness, our very own Joe McDonald at one point was serving on the Educational Finance Committee. He, that was, that was, that was great to have that advocate for, you know, somebody that we could really talk to and who could understand and try to interpret for us. He's since moved on, but, no, he still has those connections, so that's always been good for us in our district.
Good, very good. All right, back to you, Jim. I feel like I'm picking on you all the time here, Jim.
Ask more about finance.
Oh, no. We go to Amy first, sorry, Amy. Share your thoughts on what school districts should do to assess and assist with student mental health?
It's been, that's been very eye-opening to me as a, as a board member, and, and definitely over the past, I would say, three years, there's a different trend that started to emerge. I sat on the elementary site base committee, which is working side-by-side with some of our elementary staff, and the amount of behavioral issues that were coming into the district was just something that we needed to start having some conversations around. And so I think that we've done some good work with school psychologists and trying to figure out different interventions and different ways to treat some of that. I also have had the pleasure to serve, because we are a member of a seven-district special education co-op, which is Masico, which helps us keep our special educations down, costs down, and I'm actually been the chair of that co-op for several years. And, and that is, that's a topic that we talk about. I don't have an easy answer, it's not an easy answer. I think it's very personalized and very unique, but we have to have the professional development dollars, I think, to educate all of our staff, who are oftentimes that first line of, not defense, but first line of advocacy for some of those students, whether it's mental health, you know, behavioral, the whole gamut. And we just don't do enough there, to be honest. We need to spend more in that space.
All right, thank you. Sue?
So my experience with what the district does has been within the last year of my being on the board. What I do remember from touring the facility and meeting with all the different staff related to special ed is obviously, they focus in on, on early intervention, right, related to different mental health and to assist and support. The one thing I will note that it is becoming more and more of an issue, and I know they brought in a district speaker for the district staff earlier this fall to discuss this, and how to create that connectivity with kids in this environment is going to be more and more challenging. So we, we expect staff to do early interventions. We're gonna need to figure out ways for them to be able to connect with kids easier in these virtual slash hybrid situations. So I think there, to Amy's point, there's a lot more work, and I think what we may have done in the past is not necessarily indicative of what's gonna work in this current environment in order to make sure that our kids have the best support system to address these mental health issues that are coming up.
Okay, thank you. And Jim?
And I, I agree that in these times, these COVID times, these distance learning times, senior kids being stripped of things they've been looking forward to their whole life, these things can cause, you know, real depression. And, you know, kids are moody, and I have girls, so they're really moody sometimes, and you can confuse moodiness with depression, but it's, it can be there. And you really just have to, parents need to step up and tell us, or tell whomever, that my kid needs some help. And we need to be able to offer that help when it's needed, and it's a personal, private thing, so it's a really difficult thing for me to comment on someone else's child, but I would really just love to be able to offer some kind of guidance or some kind of avenue that we have available to them at school. You know, this is a, it's a serious issue that can turn very serious, so you wanna have kids be kids, but you wanna make sure that they are growing to be healthy, healthy adults, so.
Sure.
That's.
Okay, very good. All right, we would now take questions from the audience, if there are any. So questions must be something all candidates are able to answer, so please approach the podium and state your name and address for us.
Hello. My name is Calvin Brant in Franklin Township. I have a business in town here, Cal Brant, and the, and the one that started Silpro in town here. Question for you, CDC and the Wealth Health, World Health Organization came out and said lockdown probably wasn't a good thing for our society. I would suggest to, just a suggestion, that, and see what your thoughts are, just get the kids back to school. Can you talk about that?
So you want their personal opinion, Cal? Is that what you're saying? Okay, thank you. Let's see, Amy, you're up.
I think that we would all agree that the current environment that we're educating our students is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. It's hard to say because my, I, I don't have the autonomy, I don't, I have to adhere to what the governor has put forth in terms of his executive order. So I think as a board, we did the next best thing that we could was we advocated for committees to start their work in April, May, to try to come up with the most optimal environment for all three scenarios. And I think we did an amazing job. Again, we started almost, well, we did start the day we were scheduled to start. Other districts had to postpone, they just weren't ready, they didn't have their plans. I feel like we did the work all summer to come up with an, an environment that was the best that we could under the situations that we have. My personal opinion is almost irrelevant as, as I'm a one-member of a seven-member board, and I have to weigh every aspect of it. Just, no, I, this isn't the ideal situation that we're in.
Okay, thank you. Amy, or Sue?
I agree, obviously, we want our kids back in school, that's where the best learning occurs. And part of this is living in the guardrails that we're given and ensuring that we follow those to maximize the experience that the kids are getting. It's, to the point of our role, I think Amy had touched on this, as a board, we're bound by what the, what the governor, what the government is allowing us to do in order to keep the doors open for the schools from a funding perspective. And I know enough to be dangerous, but I've been in a few of the committee discussions related to the way funding flows for different types of staff in different types of situations. And so there are certain situations where the decisions are already sort of made before they even get to our door. And obviously, again, would love for the kids to be back in person. All of the research, all of the teachers, staff, everyone, parents would love that. But again, as part of what we're doing from a governance perspective, we want to make sure that we follow what's before us from a regulation perspective.
Okay, thank you, Sue. Jim?
And, yeah, obviously, I agree, and you've heard me say it many times, that I wish both my kids were in school five days a week. And, you know, I understand, I have some friends that are on the board, and I've asked them these questions, you know, why Delano has such a low case rate versus Wright County versus, you know, we have kids come from Hennepin County, so we're kind of in the middle of two, two issues going on. And I say, you know, can't we just use the Delano School District and get our kids back in school? But obviously, if I had any kind of vote or any kind of say, I would have, both my girls would be in school every day, all day. But, you know, like you say, what's my personal opinion? Cases per 10,000 versus recovery rate per 10,000 or mortality rate of zero to 19-year-olds? Now, these are the important numbers, and obviously, cases are gonna go up, the more testing we do, the more people we find are sick. We're only testing sick people. So obviously, these numbers keep going up, but at least we aren't knee-jerk reacting on every day. We're taking a broad look at it, and as the cases go up and down, we're, we're able to keep 10 and unders in school, and we're able to keep the other kids in hybrids. So I, I can only say a small prayer that those numbers go down enough that the older kids can get back in school too.
Kind of as a parent, my kids, obviously, are long out of high, out of school, and they now are parents themselves, but I, I laugh when I think about how many times I had to holler at my kids to get up and get to school. They didn't want to go, and now kids are crying to go to school. Granted, it took a pandemic for that to happen, but, you know, gotta be careful what you wish for sometimes, kids, right?
I do think those early days last spring, the kids were getting a lot more sleep, and you could see that.
Yeah.
You could see the benefit of that, and that was one thing that has been tossed around for so many years around school start times and our kids getting enough sleep. So that was the one interesting thing, but otherwise, it was not a good environment.
You learn a few things the hard way sometimes, but, yeah. All right. Is there another question? Steve? We'll take one more.
Hi there, Steve Rogers, Delano resident. First of all, I want to say thank you guys. I can only imagine how hard it's been this last year, what you guys have had to go through, and thank you for your service. For a couple of business owners and myself looking at bringing a business to Delano, obviously, the last referendum that passed, we were told it was going to be no more than a cup of coffee a day or whatever. That was the, the statement that was brought forth. As we can all probably tell, it was a little more than, or it's a very expensive cup of coffee that we all had to take in. This new referendum that you guys are talking about putting in, do you have an estimated, and again, I know it's very preliminary, but do you have an estimated amount that you guys are gonna be looking for, what a percentage is going to be, what that increase is going to be? And then the second half is, while the economists are talking about a housing bubble, and that means that, again, a lot of the tax revenue won't be coming in, how would you guys handle that?
Okay. That would be Sue.
Again, knowing enough to be dangerous, I don't know at this point what the estimated increase. At this last meeting, we just filed for the, going to the, to the referendum, so I'm sorry, I can't answer that question with my level of, level or lack of knowledge at this point. Related to the housing bubble question, I think where I go is just looking at the school as a budget, right? You have what you take in and what you can spend, and you need to make decisions that are responsible related to what you bring in and what you can spend, so that you don't overspend. I think the district so far has been creative related to cost-cutting these last couple years. I think it's gonna get tighter. And again, looking at the decisions we make to impact the kids the least so that they are in some senses oblivious, right? Their worlds have been tipped upside down in a normal school situation. I'd hate to have to make any other changes that would change that from a fiscal perspective, so would want to look at those as the last lever you pull is impacting kids.
Okay, very good. Sue, thank you. Jim?
I think Sue and I wish Amy had gone first on this one.
And then you could say ditto.
So obviously, I'm not aware of how much the referendum is asking for yet, because I, this will be my first year on a board, and I do know that I, housing bubble. So basically, when I lived in Montrose, I didn't intend on living there for 12 years, but 2008 rolled around and my house became not as valuable as I wanted to sell it at. But that also allowed me to sell my house in Montrose and buy a house here for a lot less than it was probably worth. So as far as taxes go and housing bubbles go, these things obviously are cycles. And my career, I'm a regional sales manager, so I understand that to have a budget, you have to have income, so, and then you spend within that, within that budget. So that's where I bring knowledge in, within a budget and how to stay within a budget. But as far as the referendum goes, I apologize, I'm not gonna.
And so I'll try to not have scattered, because my mind is going in a couple of different places. So first of it, it's such a, it's such a puzzle. So Steve, you're, you're right. So there's, there's two pieces of it. So the operating referendum is the revenue that the school district requires to just keep the lights on, if you will. What we just passed was the bond. So there's an operating referendum, which is the daily money as our budget, and then the bond is what we used and we, to build the facilities. That was a substantial hit to the tax. The operating, operating referendum, those are usually like 10-year operating referendums. So that's what's coming due. So what we need to do first and foremost is renew it, like status quo. So what we're getting now is what we need at minimum, because that's what we've been living off of for the past so many years. We have not said how much up or down that would be. At this point, we're, last year, we were in budget cuts. We were trying to figure that out. We're doing financial modeling, trying to figure out now, what is the state going to give us? You know, we were looking at better times, and now we don't know what Governor Wells is going, what, what the state's going to come forward. Is this a, is this a freeze? My goodness, are we going to get some of the, the delay in payments that we were seeing three or four years ago? We just don't know. So there's a lot of financial uncertainty that as a district, we have to figure out first and foremost this, this next year, because we will have to start to make those efforts to figure out what it is that we're going to need. Then we also have, like Sue, I think you were saying, we have another piece of a levy. So we have a voter-approved levy, and then we have a non-voter-approved levy, and that goes for alternative facility. So, you know, ICE, the ICE fees for the hockey, you know, a lot of different things go into that levy. Some of those levies, we've actually seen some decrease. It gets lost in the overall, but those levies have come down a little bit. So hopefully, that, that will continue. My, my personal educational point has been, over the past three years, I'm trying to learn about abatements, you know? I don't know a lot about them. I'm sorry, and I know, I know I'm timed, so if you just allow me this one little liberty. I was excited when we started, when I started hearing about commercial development in Delano, because I thought, is this going to afford kind of some of that tax relief, similar to what we see in Orano and some other districts, where their tax base just doesn't have to carry that burden as ours have for our operating referendums? And then I got a rude awakening when I was like, wait, we don't get that. What is this abatement? And still, I can't speak intelligently on abatements. I'm trying to educate myself on them, because I want to know holistically, what does that mean for our entire tax base, so that we can get some of that relief, both as just a private taxpayer, but also as a school board member? I want to better understand some of that commercial industrial development. So I don't know, Steve, if that really answered your question, but that's some of the things that are on my mind.
I guess if there was just a preliminary, your goal is to be equal and not raise it, right?
Yeah. I think at minimum, we need it renewed, and that's the starting point of the conversation.
Good. All right. Very good. Well, we'll give each candidate two minutes to give their concluding remarks, to wrap it up, and let us know whatever you want us to know that you haven't yet shared with us about your candidacy. And we'll start with Jim.
Well, I want to thank you all for listening to me, and I apologize for the inexperience, but like I said, I'm, I'm here. I have two girls in the school for another, at minimum, 11 years. And I really want to just get involved in this town more and just know that, like I say, besides my passion being my own children, but my passion is trades and skilled labor. And, you know, I, obviously, my ultimate big goal would be a whole new wing on the school of just trades and welding and robotics and electrician and carpentry trades. But, you know, obviously, those are full wallet problems that we probably don't have. But I really just want to be involved with kids that maybe are falling through the cracks, and they need to know that these positions are out there. My own experience, when I graduated from my technical college, everyone in my program had a job before we graduated. Companies literally came to our school and hired us. These are very important times. My, my career has afforded me to travel to almost every state in this country. I've traveled to Japan, Germany, England, Mexico, Canada, all doing skilled labor. And every time I go into a manufacturing plant, there is a sign on the door, "Help Wanted." And these are good jobs, and these are rewarding careers. I just don't want there to be some kind of stigma out there that trades and skilled labor is a failure, that you didn't go to a four-year college. And I know that we do a great job. We do. We do a great job. I just really want to make sure that these, this guidance is there. Thank you.
Very good. Thanks, Jim. Amy?
I just want to say thank you to the community that elected me 12 years ago. It's been an honor to serve. I don't feel like I'm ready to be done. I have some more passion, and I have some more things that I think I, that we can accomplish together. I've enjoyed the time that I've served. I think experience is, is something that we need to continue to have on the, on the board. So I hope that I've earned the right to continue that, that service. But also, I also want to encourage our community. So, you know, we've tried really hard as a board to be transparent in communication. I have always been open for anybody. When I was chair for several years, I really enjoyed actually interacting with people who were brave enough to come and talk to the board. I, I don't know why people don't want to reach out to us directly. I've often said, you know, there are nine people who really can get you the answer, not on the community board. It's the superintendent, the business manager, and your seven board members that can really help you understand any and everything you would ever want to know. And I really encourage people to reach out to us. I agree with you, Jim. I think we've, we've done such a disservice to a lot of students to make them think they all have to go for, you know, a four-year college education. I think we need to relook at the damage, as a society, we've done to our, our manufacturing environments. I agree. I think Wright Tech is an outstanding outlet that doesn't get utilized. Why we don't have the highest numbers, numbers like Buffalo, is baffling to me. So I, I think that's fantastic in an area that we should absolutely continue. Project Lead the Way, that was, that's an amazing outlet as well. So anyways, thank you for allowing me this opportunity and hopefully affording me another four years.
All right. Thanks, Amy. And Sue?
Well, thank you for having this event, for allowing us to get to know each other and for you to know us a little bit better. As I said, I've been on the, the board for almost a year, basically a year right now. And so I feel like I'm just getting at the cusp of starting again to know the inner workings and have been feeling like I can bring, as a parent and with my professional experience skills, that the board currently would complement the skills on the rest of the board related to the human resource aspect. I've been lucky enough to attend the negotiations for, I believe, what are we at, five different contracts for different groups of employees so far that we're still working through within the district and would love to continue to be able to use my skills to support the work of the district. When I look at success for the district, obviously, I look at maintaining the academic excellence that we have. And I think to both what Jim and Amy have said, that academic success looks different for every kid. And knowing that one kid balancing their checkbook and the next kid being an astrophysicist is what the public school system sort of needs to look at as we look at the different skill levels of kids. And also, looking at the environment we have our kids in right now is challenging for them and how we can support them from a mental health and also an inclusivity perspective. And finally, all of that needs to be baked into the foundation of fiscal responsibility of spending what we have and making those smart decisions to try and impact the kids the least amount. So thank you again for your time. I would be honored to serve a full term on the school board.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. And with that, we want to thank the candidates again for participating this evening. And actually, I want to thank every one of you that came out, because an informed voter is always the best kind of voter. Yes, even John, Steve. I saw that little, little, little point. I know. I haven't seen you for a while, so I appreciate that so much, Jim. Just remember to vote on November 3rd. It's critical. I know that, you know, we are a well-run community in all aspects, so that's great. The school board is a tough job, and I can only imagine how tough it is now. But to your point, Steve, it's important that as voters, you guys listen, really pay attention and listen when these things come up that the school has to try to figure out, because you're the one paying for it. So it's so important for you to help them do their job, you know? No matter who it is that's on the board. So, yeah. And tomorrow night is our second round of Meet the Candidates, the second part of our Meet the Candidate series, where we will be getting to know a little better our state candidates. So please join us again tomorrow night at 7:00. We want to thank the city of Delano and KRWC for coming out and making sure we're out into the world and for hosting us tonight. So thank you all. Have a good night.[1773.12][1773.12][applause]